Fifteen years, you're gonna have fifty thousand people, how many more cars is that? And how many more bikes is that?
Hopefully more like some cars.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get on my bike.
I'm going to celebrate Jesus and about time I got to church, I was asking for forgiveness.
I'm gonna get on my bike and I'm gonna go to Ellen's and I'm gonna put two girls through sex on my handlebars and then try to pedal back.
Okay, that's a good.
And I can get there and it's flat.
I, I guess one thought is, is we could really be a, a leader in this area by creating an educational module that we could take to the local high schools in Northwest Arkansas. That could be part of the driver training program. And that would be a wonderful outcome of this effort of education here. Is to create a module that could be used in the local schools for driver education. That's a starting point.
I agree, and that was my whole thought with, with Vision Zero as it is, the twenty thirty eight's the target year, those people aren't driving yet, they're not, you know, they're so far off from driving. So we still have a lot of time to get things like that implemented where when the next, you know, kids are turning sixteen, they're learning some of this stuff at that point rather than as adults or, you know, so.
But those, those, those high school students that are learning to drive with this module can take that information home and share it with their friends and family. And so it would spread it out a little bit in terms of what the benefits would be.
And, and that's probably, I would guess that'll be part of something that regional planning is working on, they're working on more of a regional thing.
I don't know that I would assume that they would be taking this on unless you followed up and concluded that in conversation.
I'll give the feedback, I love the feedback.
I think it's an ideal goal and objective of this study that we're doing to make that a part of the outcome.
Agreed.
Next.
That one had two, so that one was.
Wait, 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 I haven't even read the second one yet.
Okay, sorry.
Well, let me, can I say one thing? This is approving application. So you'll go through an application process, we'll get an award theoretically, and then you will see it again to approve that and do what needs to be done with it.
You're right.
Or, or not get it, we may not get it, that's right.
Yeah, late fall is when they anticipate giving the awards out. We may or may not get it, in fact, they've asked us to prioritize these two different projects. Because we're the same entity applying for both, so I'd like y'all's feedback on that too, which one you think might be more valuable? Once we talk about both, but there's a chance they only fund one, or, or none, or both, so we'll just have to see how that goes.
Okay, H is a resolution to prove main application expressing support for an Arkansas Department of Transportation, RDOT, Transportation Alternatives, that's another cap, eighty twenty reimbursable grant for Bella Vista Way corridor planning study. And if you want to go on that, did you wanna add to that?
So this one is blue slides instead of green, like changed it up a little bit, you know. Taylor, you can switch to the next one, so I've got, like the rest of Bella Vista, Bella Vista Way has gone through several iterations, most recently the completion of I forty nine around Bella Vista has removed a tremendous volume of interstate traffic and large trucks. What we're left with is a highway designed for interstate traffic that is bisecting our town. We have a high-speed four-lane highway dividing our commercial zones, which dramatically reduces the safety of all roadway users, but particularly the safety of our vulnerable user groups such as cyclists and pedestrians. I won't speculate on what Blue Crane may envision for the Sugar Creek, Sugar Creek Shopping Center, but I feel pretty confident that the terms walkability and bike-friendly will be more synonymous with it than interstate or high speeds. That is to say, what is already an undesirable situation will only be exacerbated with future development. It's imperative that we take the time to study the Bella Vista Way corridor and consider how we can turn it from a dangerous and deteriorating old highway into a thriving main street that serves the needs of Bella Vista both now and in the future. Did you already? Okay, yeah, we're there, so, uh, let's see here. This has been talked about in the past, but the basic idea is improve Bella Vista Way to make it more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. In the past, the notion was the cost of ongoing maintenance would be preventative for us to take that on. The idea was RDOT would delist it from their state highway system. And so we operated under that assumption, but we recently met with RDOT and not only did they say they would maintain it on their system, which means continue providing maintenance on it, they have also really encouraged us to apply for this grant and continue applying for these grants. They said, apply for as much as you can right now, get the design and start stacking up grants for the construction. There, I, it was, Taylor and Doug were there, it was, like, I was incred, they were incredibly positive, would you agree, Taylor?
Yeah.
Doug?
I'm gonna agree, say it.
Do what? It, it baffled me how, how positive they were compared to what my, my assumption of going into the conversation would be, so. They loved the idea, and, and so it seemed like, well, let's go ahead and pursue another tap grant on this cycle. So at that point, we reached out to Burns and McDonald. They're a local firm that designed several successful multimodal projects throughout Northwest Arkansas. Several of their team members live here in Bella Vista, their office, I think, is in Fayville or Springdale maybe?
Rogers, isn't it?
Rogers? Several live here, and they're cyclists themselves, so they had a, a familiar area with Bella Vista Way and with our problems that we have with it here in Bella Vista. They're excited about the opportunity, they put together a proposal, which is in your packets, but basically they did a few things to help keep costs as low as they could, including drone and LiDAR topography data collection. Well, drones for survey work is much cheaper than actually surveying, I think it's seven point three miles of Bella Vista Way. Traffic count collection and traffic forecasting for one year, ten years, and twenty-year intervals. Because of course, we don't wanna do something for, conditions are as they are now, we wanna do it where it still makes sense in ten to twenty years or longer ideally. Historical safety analysis and crash evaluation, so they, they're gonna identify the problematic areas, which most of us are, we can list off, offhand pretty easily, but they're actually gonna get into the numbers, think about what's causing some of these crashes and what's causing traffic delays, what's causing backups, things like that, things that they hope to address with this reimagined Bella Vista Way. And they're gonna do a lot of public involvement, surveys, mailers, email blasts, text messages, open house style meetings, things of that nature. So they want to identify how different residents use the highway or Bella Vista Way and, and decide if it should all look the same or if different sections should have different features.
I think that's a good point too, I don't know if we skipped over the, the why, the why is it being brought forward, the plans that we adopted, did we jump over that? Can you go straight down?
Uh, we, we can get into the plans.
I think what you're talking about that now is kind of like a really good jumping point, is the why, like what does the future of Bella Vista Way look like? You know, we've adopted several plans since twenty fifteen that reiterate basically the same idea over and over, and this is a really important step to start that new idea of what Bella Vista Way is gonna look like in the future. We've adopted Vision Zero, which you kind of talked about, which also ties into the other grant. The mobility plan of our comprehensive twenty forty plan has identified seventy-one as our number one priority shared bike route for Bella Vista. So by twenty forty, that is our number one priority is getting that as a safe and accessible bike route. It's also identified as an image street of Bella Vista, which is really important in basically defining the character of what Bella Vista is. That is our number one shot to show visitors, residents, people that are traveling near and far, just what is Bella Vista, what are we? Of course, you know, we have a lot of bike focused, everything, kind of is what it seems like now, but the safety of those bike-focused goals, it should be number one, as we've said with all of our plans. We also, if you recently remember, after, right before Vision Zero, we adopted an update to our Northwest Arkansas Bike Compete Plan for Bella Vista specifically, or our action plan. That identified this route as well as a protected bike lane. Basically said that's a goal for one of our action plans to start working towards. It is imperative, one of our recommendations that we adopted, Planning Commission within city council, to provide on-street bike facilities that allow bikes to get from one place to another, including destinations or nodes, commercial centers, recreation centers, and of course, in their neighborhood, two items that they need. And just wanted to really focus on that, the Master Greenway Plan also has this, if you remember that back in twenty fifteen, this has a primary or another priority paved trail here on seventy-one. So we have multiple plans that we've said the city is gonna start working towards this, almost in the last nine years, almost decade now. So this is a really great opportunity to start taking a step towards all those plans that we've adopted. And it's really exciting, so I hope everyone sees it that way, but didn't wanna take too much of your time, but just to help support the why we're talking about.
Definitely, it kind of started with the idea of, oh, let's re-strike the highway and include bike lanes. And then it thought, well, that's really short-sighted, let's think bigger, let's really figure out what the community needs out of this, out of Bella Vista Way. And that's connectivity and a multitude of other things, so. And, you know, we've messed around with some concepts already, and I mean, it's easy to envision yourself on Bella Vista Way with, with off-street bike lanes to totally separate bikes from cars, which Mr. Wozniak will be stoked about. Well, tree-lined, so aesthetically, it's far more pleasing. Tree-lined streets also statistically, people drive a little slower on them, you, you drive a little more cautiously. Small things we can do that really improve Bella Vista Way for everybody who uses it. And so, yeah, Burns McDonald's gonna go through this whole process, they're gonna come out with fifteen percent designing construction plans as well as cost estimates. And one thing that they've really been stressing is doing all this in a way where we can use what they, their deliverables to get public support, so they're gonna have nice visuals, good explanations, as well as use what they provide to apply for future grants so that we can keep getting grant money to help fund this as it moves into construction phase. So that takes us to the next slide of funding. This one's not, not as beautiful as the last one, but the RDOT tap grant, again, it's an eighty percent grant. So that would be three hundred and ten thousand, and the city would be our matching grant for that, or matching funds would be seventy-seven thousand. I've talked with Kim, I've got Kim's stamp of approval, that she thinks all this is, is good and on the up and up, so I'd take her word for it, but that's where that stands, and like I said also, maybe only one of these ends up getting funded, maybe both do. We do have to prioritize them, what are y'all's thoughts on that? I know I personally was in love with the education component on the other one. And then we talked with RDOT and they were so, so positive, I was like, alright, we're, we're applying for the highway too. And now we have a dilemma of which one we should prioritize, and I don't wanna make that decision alone, so what are y'all's thoughts?
This is the first I heard about prioritizing, but I think H is a lot more than about bikes and pedestrians, it's about, as I said, X is about making seventy-one, I would characterize it more like a parkway.
Yep.
And the fact that I forty-nine goes around, you know, that wouldn't have been considered before because it was the quasi freeway, right? Even though through town, so.
I agree, I think, I think H, I think, I think education is really important, there's, there's no doubt about it, but I think the, the reimagining of seventy-one is really important.
I think it unlocks the potential of Bella Vista in a lot of ways, you know.
Has the Transportation Advisory Board had a chance to like, put their feelings out there about this?
So we've met a few times, they've, you know, obviously liked both, both the proposals, but we haven't actually sat down and prioritized them with that group yet. Greg?
The one thing I hope that we're very mindful of, I know the traffic has been, has reduced drastically on seventy-one, but looking ten, fifteen years down the road, with the growth estimated for this part of the state, I mean, to explode, I mean, in the over a million. So these small highways are going to become, you know, and, and as the housing thing plays out, I mean, just to live in Bentonville proper is a ton of money now. So all these families are being pushed out into these more rural areas that are not right off an interstate, to where these, you know, seventy-one is still gonna be a mode, but, but once you start piling these people in, you know, I mean, ideally, and I think it's a great idea, but I hope we're mindful of.
Well, Burns McDonald, in our, in our earliest discussion with them, they have already mentioned, oh, we might need to add, they, they've, they're considering, how can it be designed where if it needs to be converted to a traffic lane at a later date, it could be, or if it needs to be converted to bus stops or train stations, things like that, that, who knows what the future may hold, you know, that could be a combination.
And I, and I agree, out of H, this, I think, education, obviously, in my opinion, would be, there's a lot of room on seventy-one.
Oh, yeah.
Take out all those.
Yeah.
The whole point of providing multimodal is to plant more people. So if you give them more modes of transportation, that helps with the traffic situation, that's what we're doing as a region right now, that's why we have the regional bike lane that we were adopted. The more people we have, we want more shared paths, we want more bike lanes, so that way cars take up a lot of, a lot of space. They take up more spaces than cars, you can fit more people, fit more buses and more people in a smaller area on bikes than you can with roads. So like, the whole point of this as well is to also help with that exact thing, you're bringing up to prepare for those people.
And, and that's all I'm getting at, is that I, that's, I just don't know the vision looking down the road, you know, decades.
Yeah, statistically, bike commuters are, people are more likely to start commuting on bike with protected bike lanes even than they are with a greenway trail. The greenway trail will also hopefully extend to the state line and beyond, I've talked with, I mean, that's the plan at the moment, but it's less attractive to certain groups of cyclists, mainly commuters, who they need to go A to B, they're trying to get to work, they don't want to meander through the park, they care less about the way things look, they're using it as a mode of transportation. So the more people we get doing that, you know, that could alleviate some future, you know, car congestion.
Especially like, this is like Walmart, who has exclusively opening, but they're just getting only eighty percent of the workforce actually parked there, they need twenty percent actually bike there, and their bike program is going to the community who live in Bella Vista, who have rented these e-bikes from Walmart so they can get to work. It's good, yeah, we have.
Yeah, Bentonville recently passed their e-bike rebate program, and that is almost solely focused on commuters. There's an effort for a regional program that will do the same thing, and Bella Vista would be included in that, so. Yeah, the e-bike really unlocked a lot of potential for commuters, expect, even in Bella Vista, it's not unrealistic to commute from Bella Vista into Bentonville or Rogers.
I mean, I could commute from Bay of Bell to Rogers, Bentonville, bike daily, so.
Yep. Larry?
I, I guess I don't mean to rain on your parade, but the reality is, in Bella Vista, like in Centerton, Centerton is connected to the metro area of, of Bentonville for employment, just like Bella Vista is connected to Bentonville and Rogers for employment. So we need that corridor for, for transportation of people and vehicles. We still have probably a majority of the folks who live here and who will be moving here that have the inborn desire and, and inborn trait of being able to get in their family car and drive to wherever they wanna drive, when, and at whatever time they wanna go.
Yep.
And so we have that transportation element for vehicles that's going to be there for a long time. We haven't adapted in this area at least to regional transportation objectives, we don't have the facilities, we don't have the support in terms of the street structures, so we're lacking a lot of things that other areas around the United States might have or do have to facilitate other modes of transportation. So we're challenged here uniquely because of the characteristics of the seventy-one corridor for us. It's wide, it has a median, it has bike lanes on the outside, but we can't slow that traffic down in those two vehicle lanes to reduce the capacity and the movement of those vehicles, that has to be maintained there for, for transportation.
That'll all be part of that study, right? Yeah.
But I think, I think that's a key, because we need to maintain that linkage to our employment base.
Absolutely.
And while we're gonna have.
The whole point would be connectivity, absolutely.
And while we're gonna have a growth in those who will use a bicycle to get to work to those employment areas, we need to build that facility as well, and that's what you're talking about. But I think, I think to reduce the speed on seventy-one for the vehicles is going to be a, a very poor choice for us long-term. At least in, in my foreseeable future for you. Because I think people are gonna wanna have that communication of transportation in the four-deal vehicle that they own to get from point A to point B, when they wanna go, at whatever time they wanna go, as quickly as.
And those, I don't.
They should enhance that. Yeah, this would enhance that, not prohibit it, your car travel, this would give another mode of transportation for people who don't have it currently.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm hoping that that's true, that it's not gonna, because right now, if we reduce the speed limit all along that whole corridor to thirty-five or forty miles an hour, the, the, the chief would have officers out there writing tickets to every other car that went down the street.
Craig, I think we need to get a grant sent you to the Netherlands, check all this out.
I will.
Okay. I think that's it, thanks, Justin, for that, that's item H, and now we have some discussion items. The Blue Crane discussion with Ferris de Boer, unfortunately he had a family emergency and had to cancel, so we'll do that in the future. The next one is legal topics with staff attorney Jason Feller.
Okay, so first thing, which sort of related to the previous discussion item we're skipping, handout, you have a copy in front of you, that's a publicly filed document. That is the assignment document of developer rights related to good communities and the new Blue Crane entity and an entity called BV Developer LLC. And there, again, this is public information, that's all I have access to. And so to the extent you may want to delve a little deeper into that information, there it is, and I pulled that out of the county records today. So you may have people ask you about that, or have, so there it is, and make a copy if you need to. Not trying to intrude on anyone's privacy, of course, that's, it's, they have to follow that, so. It is, it is informative and fills out all the details if you're a details-oriented person. So I, I needed to talk to you tonight about one of our favorite topics in the city for the last year and a half, short-term rentals. And as you all know, I've, I've shared several emails with you, I've provided copies of stuff that's been filed, that I filed, has been filed by the other side of the case. I know full well there are a variety of opinions on the council itself about what we've done, what we should do, what we shouldn't have done, and all of that. And so I, what I wanna do is talk to you about where things stand at this time. I wanna talk to you about moving forward and how we're gonna do that. As the attorney for the city, I have an obligation to communicate with you, I don't make these decisions, I, you all make the decisions. I do give my advice to you, and I intend to do that tonight, and then you should go without saying, it's no hard feelings, if you decide you wanna do anything else, we'll do it. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm on the staff to do that, and, and we're not doing anything wrong by making either choice. So I wanna talk to you about this. So as you know, we adopted an ordinance, I'm just gonna quickly summarize this, because I know it's late, but it is a discussion we need to have and we need to put some effort into it. We filed an ordinance, we were sued. The court granted a temporary, our temporary restraining order against that initial ordinance for a reason which was not stated.
Restraint and same thing as the injunction?
Preliminary injunction, firstly, you can consider it the same, that's okay. So we were, that was filed, that was entered, the court did not really give us any rationale for it other than her opinion that it was, I think, too much, too far, I think that may have been the extent of what she said. So we didn't get a lot of guidance in what parts were objectionable. We obviously disagreed with that opinion, painful respect to the judge, which we had and we still have. Rather than appeal that decision, which we could have done, we chose to take another avenue. During the hearing on that preliminary, our temporary restraining order, I know the mayor was present, others of you were present, many of you were present, there was some testimony during that hearing about the problems that these, some of these people testified had, what their concerns were. I think very appropriately, the mayor heard those things and decided, hey, we can live with that, basically. And so we came back to, as a council, we repealed the ordinance that had been granted the TRO and adopted a different ordinance that regulated the same topic, same topic. Shortly after that, the people who are suing us, who are short-term rental owners, not necessarily residents of Bella Vista, but owners, tried to hold the city in contempt of court and to extend the temporary restraining order to the new ordinance. That was ridiculous, that was my opinion at the time, and the court agreed with us. We had a hearing on that, the court was very clear that that's not how it works. They have repealed the ordinance that was enjoined, they have the full right to legislate. She did not find anything in the new ordinance that, which warranting a new temporary restraining order. So she allowed the existing, the new, I'll call it the new ordinance to take full force effect, and it has been full force in effect since the time you passed it, because it adopted with an emergency clause. I'll say as an aside, there are, there are many rumors, and I don't know if it's Facebook, I don't know if it's word of mouth, I don't know what it is. People that don't wanna comply, people that are trying to mislead, I don't, I'm not saying these are the people that are involved in the lawsuit, don't get me wrong, but we have people out there saying that we don't have an ordinance, they're in court, you don't have to comply, you don't have to do anything, that is flat wrong. That is flat wrong, and I'm gonna say it to the Facebook camera, that is flat wrong. It is in effect, you do have to get a permit, and there are certain limited number of permits, and I would encourage you to act before those limited number of permits run out. Having said that, we have continued, so we had that hearing, our, our new ordinance was allowed to continue. The lawsuit was amended to make claims against our new ordinance. The, basically because the claims against the old ordinance were mooted by the fact that we repealed it. So the judge is not gonna determine the constitutionality ultimately of an ordinance if the ordinance is not an ordinance. It's moot because it's been repealed. But there are still some questions that remain regarding that issue. Because they tie that issue to the issues they've argued about the new ordinance. In any event, we've continued the litigation, continued to proceed with the litigation. A period of discovery ensued, I sent a set of interrogatories and requests for production of documents to the plaintiffs, there are thirty-five individual plaintiffs. There are fewer than thirty-five total STRs involved, because we had, do have some people that are co-owners. So you'll have two people involved and one piece of property, but there are thirty-five individual plaintiffs. Twenty-some-odd STRs, I think, are involved in the case.
How many?
It's an estimate, Larry, don't, it's not, twenty, there are thirty-five individual plaintiffs. Sent interrogatories and requests for production of documents, so we're gonna litigate the case, so we need to do that. Before we did that, however, I shouldn't, I'm getting ahead of myself, we moved for what's called summary judgment. In other words, we said, there are no genuine issues of fact, we adopted an ordinance, this is what it says. They run STRs in Bella Vista, we don't doubt that they do, and therefore, Judge, you need to decide the legalities of the constitutionality of this because we're, there really are no factual questions at stake, that, there's no question about the fact that, do they own it or not? Is that really an ordinance or not? I mean, those are not. I mean, those are not factual questions that are in doubt in this case. Both sides moved for summary judgment, both saying, we should win, and for the legal reasons that have been stated. The judge granted nothing, denied both sides' motion for summary judgment, said that there were issues of fact, did not say what she thought the issues of fact continued to be, and on we go with the litigation. So now, continuing on with the discovery process, sending interrogatories, requests for production of documents to thirty-five plaintiffs, got some response, got incomplete response, got objections to our questions. We asked for copies of receipts, we asked for ownership documentation, we asked for any and all things related to their ownership. If there are other lien holders, we need to know whether or not there are other people with interest in the property, because they could theoretically have an interest in any money that they were to potentially get. These are all reasonable questions in litigation when you involve yourself in a lawsuit. I had communication with the attorney at one point, and I don't know this for a fact, but it led me to believe that there may be some communications issues with all thirty-five of them. That's a lot of people. I don't, I don't really know, I don't know whether some of them aren't cooperative, maybe not be communicative with the attorney or not, I can't answer that. I don't know if that's a reason for some of the responses, I can't speak to any of that. But we got a, we got really an unsatisfactory response. Normally, and I would say this too, because this is a conversation I would have with a client in confidence, but since we're a public entity and we have to talk in public, we have the disadvantage of being able to talk, having to talk about this publicly, but I'm just gonna talk to you about it, because we have to. Being of the mind that there may be limited communication between the attorney and the thirty-five plaintiffs, I sent requests for adnitions to all thirty-five plaintiffs. And really what that means is you request them to admit certain facts in the case. If they don't deny them, or refuse, or don't answer within thirty days, then those requests are deemed admitted. The thinking on my part is that if some of them aren't communicative, they may not be able to give responses, in which cases, in which case the information I'm asking them to admit would automatically be deemed admitted, and make life a little bit easier for us, at least as relates to some of the plaintiffs, maybe even getting some of the plaintiffs dismissed off the case. The attorney can answer for them, and did answer for them. I got, that was that, if you recall, I sent you an email, had about thirty-something attachments to it, ridiculous number of attachments. That was one for each of the thirty-five plaintiffs. Here in the last three or four days, I got responses to all of them. So they answered that, that did work. Knowing that we're continuing to litigate, and knowing we need to continue with the discovery process, part of that is to conduct depositions of the plaintiffs. I need to know what their claims are gonna be, I need to ask them questions, I need to ask them questions about the responses we got on the interrogatories we sent, I need to ask them questions about the documents we were provided, and this is a standard preparatory action as relates to civil litigation. We just happen to have thirty-five of them, which is a lot. They didn't file this as a class action suit, they filed it as thirty-five individual plaintiffs. So knowing that I need to depose thirty-five people, and knowing that that's gonna be a significant amount of time and expense, even if we end up talking to each plaintiff for an hour or less, it could, they could go very, some of them could go very quickly, some of them could be longer, but trying to estimate thirty-five depositions, bringing in a court reporter, all of the transcripts, all of the time, the court reporter's time and all of that, I asked my assistant to go out and find estimates of costs from a court reporting company that would come in and be able to do this for us. She did that for me. The best estimate we could get just to do the depositions for that number of people over a two or two-and-a-half week period that we will be doing it was twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. While I was getting those numbers in an unsolicited way, I know you had initially sent an email where they demanded sixty-something thousand dollars at one point, that's ridiculous, we weren't doing that. I emailed that out to all of you, and that was a non-starter. But during this process that I'm talking about of us getting these estimates, kinda during this law, I got an unsolicited email from the attorney, which you all have seen, where they wanted to settle for a total of eleven thousand dollars. So that gets, that makes things more interesting, because now we're looking at spending twelve to fifteen with a question as to where we would be in the end of this case anyway, versus knowing we could pay eleven, not admit any liability, our existing ordinance would be in place still and ending the case. So that's a, that's a business decision, but there's more at stake than just business decisions, because we're the government, and there are policies, and there are things that you all need to consider, and it's up to you. But I need to bring this to you, because I think it's important that we all thoughtfully consider this. I need money in order to pay for those depositions, I also need money in order to continue the litigation. So whether or not we had gotten an offer from them to settle, I was going to come to you this month with a request for budget adjustment out of, for twenty thousand dollars out of reserve to fund litigation expenses to cover these depositions and whatever else we may have between now and September when this case is scheduled to go to trial. So that was gonna happen. We got this offer, not knowing what all we wanna do, I told, and was in constant conversation with the mayor as well, and he knows about all this, they made this offer, I basically said, we won't know what we wanna do till the end of the month, so you know, we'll just kinda leave it there, and we'll be able to tell you what we think about what you're saying later. Kinda left it like that. I think you need to seriously consider this, and I know that's very unpalatable to some of you. And here's the reason why. You can spend eleven thousand dollars, which is ridiculous, and I don't like it, because I don't think they, they're due it, okay? And I think the law's pretty clear on this, but we are where we are. We can pay eleven thousand dollars, we know what we pay, the case gets dismissed with prejudice, means they don't bring the case back, as to all thirty-five of them, the existing ordinance that we have remains in place, it doesn't get repealed, it doesn't get altered in any way. We do not acknowledge any liability to them whatsoever if we took this deal. So whatever happened before, so be it, we don't admit anything, and all the claims that they would have would be released as against us. That's if you do that. Of course, we can go to court, and if we go to court, we could either win or we could lose. And I think we would win, but I can't guarantee you we would win, and we've had some surprising results in this case up to date. If we go to court and we win, ordinance remains valid, our costs, however, are unknown, because at least outside the twelve to fifteen thousand, we know we're probably gonna spend, there could be some more, and they're at this point uncapped. If we go to court and win, there would not be further liability, and we wouldn't have any further claims, so there's that. If we go to court and we lose, well, let me add one thing, if we go to court and we win, then it's highly likely the other side will appeal, and if we go to the Arkansas Supreme Court and we win, then fine. If we go to the Arkansas Supreme Court and we lose, then even though we don't owe them damages, there's potential that our ordinance could be, our new ordinance even could be rejected, and we would owe them attorney's fees for everything they've done up, including through the appeal, which is gonna be a significant amount of money. If we go to court and we lose, of course, our ordinance would be invalid, our cost would be unknown and uncapped, we would be potentially liable to the plaintiff for attorney's fees, including attorney's fees on appeal if we lost on appeal, and that's potentially a significantly large amount of money, which I can't tell you how much that would be. I think ultimately we would win. I'm pretty sure we would win. I can't promise you for sure we would win. I think their claims are ridiculous. I think their positions have been ridiculous. I think they have taken an overly broad position of you can't do anything to me, and that's clearly not the case. They overstepped. And I think it's clear that the courts aren't going to allow us to do something, I think they're gonna allow us to do what we've done, frankly. But we have that now. So what I'm telling you is you need to consider this eleven thousand dollars, because you know where you stand, your dollars are capped, you've protected the taxpayers, you've made a wise business decision, but principles are important if you wanna make sure a court validates what you've done, if you want to be vindicated in what you've done, it's gonna cost. It's gonna cost us more than the eleven, even if we win. And you may be wanting to pay that.
Potentially more than twenty.
And potentially more than twenty.
The judge decides the amount, or is this a jury, right?
There's no jury in this case, they wait to jury. So if, I mean, we get to several ifs, but if-
If it goes wrong, the judge-
If it goes wrong, then a judge would, would get information from their attorney about our spend on the case and determine on a reasonable attorney's fee.
On top of the fees we already spent for the deposition?
On top of our own costs.
Yes.
Yes, that's on top of, on top, and their costs as well, because keep in mind, I can depose, they can depose. So if we go there, then what I anticipate is gonna happen, if I see fights in the future, they're gonna wanna depose each of you, and I'm gonna object to that, and I'm gonna fight about that, because I don't think they can. And that's gonna be another hearing. And so that's, that's, or other city staff or whatever, and so that could happen. I wanna be clear about a couple of things, because I know there's a lot of interest in this case. When we talk about attorney's fees, I'm paid by the city, I'm an employee of the city, I don't see a dime of any, I'm not paid outside of this case. If something went to where we got attorney's fees, I don't get that money, it goes to you. If they get attorney's fees, I don't know how they, I assume their attorney gets it, but it could be divided in whatever way they determine to divide it. But this isn't, I don't get money out of this one way or the other. The costs that are charged, that goes to an outside contractor, that's not anything that I see or get, so I just wanna be clear, everyone understands that, I know everyone here does, but you know, people, some people don't fully understand. Now, I understand, and I know, that there's not agreement on this council about whether we should have done this at all. There's been strong disagreement about that. I am not here to, I have never been about taking one side or the other about this issue. My, my position is this, I have to guard the legal authority of this council, acting by a majority, to act within the Constitution to the fullest extent that you have the authority to do. It's not about STR so much as it's about the next thing you might wanna go do. Or in fact, it is about STRs, because we've got things that we need to do about that, it is about that too, but it is about guarding your authority and making sure that you have options, because there may be something we do in the future where there's unanimity about it. But you know, there's a question because of something that came from lawsuit. I don't want, I don't want that. Now, all of you know as well, this has been ninety percent political and ten percent legal. There is a big debate that's gonna come to the legislature next spring, a year from now, when they come into session. And that is gonna be about, our city's gonna be restrained or prohibited or whatever in regulating in this field. And there are a lot of cities in this state that have adopted regulations, frankly, ones that are much more onerous than ours, and they have a big interest in what's going on here. They have a big interest in our case, I know as Doug knows, there was interest in what they tried to do at the legislature last time. I know all of you know, Jerry was there, Doug was there, the citizens who were interested were there. That is going to happen whether we settle this case or fight, there's gonna be that argument, and they have that form always. So we may be in a situation where we go to trial in September, somebody's gonna win, whoever loses is gonna appeal, the legislature's gonna come into session in January, they're probably gonna adopt something, and then we're gonna still be in front of the Supreme Court arguing about the old ordinance, which we may or may not even be able to keep based on what the legislature does between now and then. So we need to think about the principle of the thing when we end up thinking we're gonna have to change something anyway.
This is strictly a business decision, eleven thousand or twenty thousand?
It's eleven thousand versus potentially uncapped, unknown.
Well, you're gonna ask for twenty thousand?
Well, it's twenty, yeah, and the, I need twenty thousand dollars to litigate, not saying I'm only gonna spend a total of twenty, I'm gonna spend between twelve and fifteen, I know.
For sure.
For sure.
So, as you said, it's a big business decision, eleven or twenty, and you, if we don't do this, you're gonna ask for, you're gonna ask for twenty.
So you've got in front of you a draft, and I don't foresee both of these being on the agenda, because I wanted us to have this little discussion, but I've got one that amends the budget and gives me twenty thousand dollars for the legal department to keep fighting. I've got another one, which authorizes the mayor to settle for eleven thousand dollars on terms that maintain no liability to the plaintiffs based on our actions, and obviously if you wanna pursue the settlement, I don't need the twenty thousand dollars. If you give me the twenty thousand dollars to fight, obviously you don't wanna settle. So that's what, those are the two things you have, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Just in the interest of taxpayer money, if this like eleven thousand dollars is the way to go, with the unknown of minimum of twenty on it to potentially, who knows?
If it goes wrong.
Yeah. Which we don't think it would, but like, we'd be spending more money by pursuing this.
Really, right now, we're talking about, Jason's about to spend twelve to fifteen, and we know we can be done for eleven.
Yeah.
That's the business decision you've got. Now, think about what you get by paying this eleven thousand dollars. You get irritated because you're paying it. That's, that's any settlement, you get irritated because you're paying it. Your ordinance is still in effect, and the challenge to it goes away. Whatever happened to the old ordinance, doesn't matter, no liability, done, it's gone. They withdraw their claims with prejudice, means they don't refile, based on anything that they've alleged to date. So really, what you end up with is a victory, because you're paying eleven, you're gonna pay twelve to fight. Your ordinance is still in effect, you've got no liability against you, and nothing related to the old ordinance. That's the best-case scenario if you go to court.
What are your thoughts, sir?
My thoughts?
Yeah.
My thoughts are mixed.
I know.
I think Jason made a pretty good argument for, for that solution. There are other alternatives besides those two.
Well, litigate without deposing the plaintiffs?
Well, no, we could make a counteroffer. Now, if you make a counteroffer legally, their offer is off the table. So you could make a counteroffer, they could say, no, forget it, and you can't say, oh, I'll take the eleven, sue them.
With a gamble.
Yeah.
And they, they're gonna know everything we're saying, so you, you know, just in turn, so in turn, that guides your conversation at all. They may be watching it now, but they're, they're gonna know, because they're gonna, they're just gonna help. So we just need to be advised that's gonna happen.
I guess the principle of paying something, where we, in good faith, as a governing body for local issues, studied the problem and the nature of the causes of the problem, created with due diligence and ordinance to address the issues that we observed in good faith, following, again, a due diligence on our part of evaluating steps and methods and our personal unique situation in Bellevista, being all onseptic rather than, mostly onseptic rather than a sewored community, I, it, it galls me to think that we would pay them any money. I could accept a settlement with no payment on our part regardless. I'm frankly willing to roll the dice. I think we have and have established good faith in what we've done, I think we have a better-than-average ability to demonstrate to the court that we are in the right in what we've done, and I know that may not be popular, and I understand your recommendation, counselor, I really do, it's a, it's a little bit of a toss-up, but it's not one where I see us in a willingness to pay out eleven thousand dollars to an adversary who, for whatever reason, took it upon themselves and said, well, if you pass this ordinance, we're gonna sue you, as a threat to us in the first place. So we knew what we were getting into when we passed that first ordinance, and, and I think we need to ride the horse to the end of the road, even if it takes us to the Supreme
So, personally, they haven't-
Because of principle.
I, I think they have to prove that they have been damaged, correct? We have an argument that they're, they're not, they didn't, we're not even liable to them for damages. They can't sue us for damages. I mean, that's part of, but if, if the judge didn't agree, then they would have to prove that, that they had damages, and, and the real, the money in this case is the attorney's fees, it's not the damages, really, it's the attorney's fees. Because, you know, we, we're a year and a half into litigation at this point, we'll be another half-year into it by the time of the trial, and there will be an appeal, I assume one way or the other, if they lose. And there will be an appeal, I assume one way or the other, if they lose, I feel confident, so. So this was broken out into six thousand dollars for septic. Let me, let me say, if we pay, if we did this, it's just for our convenience. It's not based on any number that they said. But didn't they break it down? They had a rationale for their number. And it was, it was like twenty-five hundred for the lawyer, and like eight hundred or something dollars apiece for the thirty-five, between eight and nine hundred dollars apiece for the, for the each property owner or something. That's how he justified the number. We're not going to admit that we're paying it for damage or attorney's fee. If we did this, it's for convenience, and to be done with the case, and to receive a release, and to move forward. It's not, it's not about. How many of these plaintiffs have secured a permit to be operating a short-term rental up to this point? Some have, Taylor has looked into that number, I don't have it right here in front of me. And you have to understand as well, they're going to have to comply with a new ordinance, they don't get a free pass. No, I understand that, they've been out of compliance this whole entire time, if they have. If they've been operating. Yet, right, they've been operating without. I don't, I don't, I don't know to what extent they've been operating.
Yeah, it's like the listings change quite a bit, right? Some people take their listings down, they put it back up. That's kind of the thing we run into, so we have to run by a specific date if it's listed or not. Like we have people that pull them down, pull them not pull them down, things like that.
Well, but we have a record in the CTS, right? Who has to take a permit?
And that's why we run, that's why we run it every week, because the listings change so much.
You're talking about the granters?
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm talking about when you secure a permit, that's for a year.
Correct.
So we know who's secured a permit, and I'm talking about who's actually been permitted, not who's advertising.
Okay, so yeah, we have four hundred and thirty permits right now, and three hundred and ninety-three of those count towards the six hundred cap.
Yeah, I understand that. So how many of the thirty-five plaintiffs have secured a permit? There was a handful that hadn't, if I recall correctly, when you looked for me, Taylor.
Oh, I remember.
Six months ago or more.
It's been a while.
Because I'd like to know how many of the plaintiffs have secured a permit to operate the short-term rental. That's interesting, but it's not ultimately relevant to the question we have to be in court about. No, I understand that. Okay. But, I mean, I get you, but they've been operating without a permit, and a permit is required. They'll be accountable for it. Right? And we have taken no action. Well, I don't know to which, that we've.
Yeah.
Well, May first, we just ran a new, a new number of unpermitted, and actually our code enforcement officers have been, we, I know one specific code enforcement officer's visited an ORC hall over a hundred addresses.
Yeah.
We had about a hundred and forty of them that we pulled, that we're currently contacting to get into compliance. So I mean, we are actively seeking out those.
They're betting this one.
Yeah.
I can't answer the question, it's open. The thirty-five people, and of those properties involved, how many of them have yet to get a permit? They've claimed that they want to operate short-term rentals, whether they have or not, I mean, I think they probably have. Is it listed or not? I don't know. So there's really a little bit of a different question there. They might be able to qualify as a plaintiff, and technically still not have taken action yet that would require a permit. You know, there's some gray area there that they could live in, is what I'm saying. I think it's not to our advantage to discuss the details of the case. What is to our advantage is to discuss broadly. Do we want to do eleven and be done? Do we want to spend twenty? Up to twenty at this point, if I need more, I would come back to you. But especially spend twelve to fifteen, and still not have anything resolved.
Well, can we not go forward next week and have both these ready?
Sure.
Give people a chance to think about it and whatnot.
Of course, so what I would suggest is, and here's what I will ask of Wanda. We'll put both, go ahead and put both these on the agenda. Put the one that would authorize a settlement first. I mean, these are going to be at the bottom of the list, but put that one. Then put the one that authorizes the budget amendment for the extra money. Because if the, if the settlement is approved ultimately by a majority, then I would request this one be taped. Because we're not going to need to do that yet. If we do it the other way around, then we're going to have an unnecessary vote on something, potentially. We could also propose an amendment, right? All right, so if the amendment is, no, we'll pay fifteen, we need to tell them. No, no, that's not it. Okay, what's the amendment? I don't know, I don't know how to word it right now, I'll have a conversation with you about that.
Don't forget, if you want to have an amendment, it has to be written.
It has to be in writing, and keep in mind, that if it's anything different than what I've told you, it's a rejection of their offer, and we run the risk of not settling it. So I mean, that may be what you want to do. What kind of thing are you talking about in turn, what, how, how do you see it potentially being amended, at least? I don't know, it's a potential, I mean, I'm kind of thinking my way through, right? I wouldn't expect them to see this tonight. So I have to think about it, but one thing would be, you know, if we were going to pay the eleven thousand dollars, any of the plaintiffs that are not in compliance with the ordinance currently will agree that they will come in compliance. They don't have to agree to abide by the law, we can make them. They don't have to agree to that. Okay? No one has to agree to abide by the law. They think we have to ask their permission to abide, to require them, and that's the inverse of that, it doesn't work that way. They don't, they don't determine how you legislate, and they don't have to give permission in order to be subject to the rules. It's just interesting, I just think, so our, our second ordinance was upheld by the court. The temporary restraining order was denied. And we had thirty-five plaintiffs. Yes. Right? It could be in violation of this ordinance the whole entire time. They're not, but they're. And then they're asking us to come and pay them eleven thousand dollars, and they're not in compliance with the ordinance. Nor do we know if they've been damaged or not. You know what I'm saying? I have some, I have, like I said, I don't want to discuss details of the case. They have provided certain receipts that they claim is damage, I don't believe that is damage. That gets into the legal dispute. If we want to fight legally, we got fights to make. I'm agreeing with you, Doug. What I'm saying is, we've got this choice. Do you want to quit fighting and cut this off, and know what it's cost you, and move on with what you've done forward? Or do you want to say, no, I'm going to prove to them I'm right? And we're going to keep fighting if it means a risk, and we'll pay what it takes, my God, they're going to know we did what we told them we could do. Well, they also could hear this conversation, and they could go, you know what, if we did this, then we might be able to retrieve eleven thousand dollars, right? If they know that you've approved and authorized a settlement of not to exceed eleven, yeah, they're going to know that we're going to potentially agree to paying them eleven. Yeah, we don't really have any, it's not like you said, Jason, pay up to eleven and offer to see. I just know people are hearing the conversation. Yeah. And they could say, you know what, if we did this, then maybe we could move forward with this agreement. They would have to propose it. I didn't follow that, I'm sorry. Well, you just heard what I said, I mean, they have thirty-five plaintiffs, right? And we don't know whether they've acquired a permit or not, well, I think that's kind of important. They have been non-compliant this whole entire time. We know whether they, not they have a permit, and that's not the legal question of the case. I get you. But that's what I'm doing, Doug, I'm not.
Okay, that's good.
And after we pass it, we can make them comply.
Yeah, I get you.
So think about it next week, we'll put them both back, that'd be good. Thanks, Jason, for your summary.
It's like an insurance claim, you know, you got an insurance claim for a car accident or whatever, insurance adjuster says zero, I'm not going to pay you anything. You go to court, it costs you a hundred grand.
Yeah.
It's the same here.
Okay. The next issue is the youth council update by council member Honzel.
Can I ask you a quick minute? I'll be brief.
Oh, boy.
Well, I wanted to start by making sure to recognize and thank Wanda and Cassie, if she's still back there, and Wendy, for your help. Those three have done phenomenal work moving this thing forward. The ball is starting to really kind of roll with the applicants. I think as of today, we've got six, and that's like in the last two or three days.
It's so exciting.
And.
So how many, how many do you need? How many are you seeking for the council?
We were, is it seven or nine?
That's what I could.
I was thinking around nine, but I wouldn't be mind even having a little bit more, because one or two might drop out last minute or something.
And that's, and that's the thing, reading through these things, is that these kids are so articulate and passionate about, you know, just their community. And it's exciting to see this. And I'm hoping that, you know, through word of mouth, if you guys know people, you know, spread the word around, it's for juniors and seniors in high school, in Bentonville, Grabot. I think that's.
Pea Ridge, yeah.
Pea Ridge, and that's. But the deadline has been extended to August thirtieth. So we can get through the summer, and that's what, I floated the idea, the email, maybe we can get into an assembly, like a senior or junior assembly, whatever, and just give a physical presentation, you know, if everything starts to kind of fall or drop off, you know, just get up there and make our presence known at the schools. And we're advertising at Bentonville High School, Grabot High School, and they, we have placed paper copies in the, in the Bellevista Library for homeschoolers. And then Cassie, the director, the communications director, I apologize, has, she has flyers for advertising, and you may contact her for those. Is that correct? Yes.
Yeah, they're scheduled to, this Bentonville school has a certain use of the program where they send electronic flyers to parents. And you can, anybody can try to send something, sometimes they're denied, but I do it regularly for city staff. So we can target high school parents. And then we'll go, those flyers will start going out closer to the start of the school year, after the summer has gone by, as a reminder.
But again, I think it's going to, it was kind of a slow mover at first, but I really think this thing's going to. And again, thanks to everybody.
I agree.
You get back to the Netherlands, you get over there. When you get back to the Netherlands.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll bike across the ocean.
The next one is Civic Plus Agenda Software Trainings, Wanda Cruz.
I won't take much of your time, this is just a quick heads up that is coming down the roads, and it will not affect you very much. It affects our department heads, it affects those of us who put the agenda together, particularly Jason and myself and the mayor, but we will be launching our first Civic Plus Agenda for council meetings in July. And what that means for you is that in July, it will look different for you. You will continue to get a link through email, and you'll just click on that link, it will take you to a different place on the city website, right? Still, the house, Cassie? This, it's within Civic Plus, but it will take them to their agenda.
Yes.
And that's all you need to worry about right now, because you'll get to your agenda, and you'll be, you'll be able to read it there, just as you do now with the packet. That's all I want to say for now, just to tell you that we're moving this along, and people are getting trained to do it, and we're moving ahead.
I can't wait, you know, go ahead, go ahead. Somebody tell us about this artwork, this new sculpture that we purchased.
That's a separate subject, let's finish this one.
Okay.
Will we be able to download the document for the packet? Because I download those and put them on my computer so I can read them and print them and do whatever.
I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will be able to have that capacity.
In PDF format then, or something like that?
Yes. We'll have, we'll probably have more capacity through Civic Plus than we do the way we're doing it now, so yes.
All right, all right, that's.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, I just want to finish this up. Now you've got a question.
One extra topic about the artwork. We have been leasing three artworks each year on the Bluebird Trail. And a number of cities have started to do that, because it's less expensive. And we decided, the Arts Council decided, to purchase one of the three artworks. The leases run out in May, or May or June of this year. They decided to purchase one of them, and it's the one that's called, What Do You Want to Do With Your Superpowers? It has some dogs and cats and stuff, it's on the Bluebird Trail. And the other two are going to be taken out, and we're going to lease new ones for the next year. But the total art budget is something like, this is off the top of my head, it's like twenty-three thousand for the year. And the purchase of that one sculpture was, it was like eleven thousand in May, and eleven thousand next January. So we spread it out on purpose, put it in different years.
So we bought that sculpture for twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a good deal? I, I think it's a good deal, because if you look at the amount of work that got put into it, and stainless steel and all that, I mean, he didn't, he didn't make any money off of it.
Yeah, a lot of things in art are like that, if you start studying the hours to go into it, you're like, hey, wait a minute, this is a lot of work.
Where's the Bluebird Trail?
It's the one that's on the road, it's right behind Fat Tire.
Behind Fat Tire.
Yeah, it's a parking lot there, yeah. Okay, I think everybody's probably had enough fun, so we'll see you next week at six, and thanks for all your hard work. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Taylor.
Yeah, we meet on Tuesday, you know, Tuesday.